All right, that one says seven, that one says six fifty-eight.
Six fifty-eight.
My phone says fifty-eight.
I've got fifty-eight.
I'll fix your clock when we're done.
Would you?
But let me forget.
Is it National Pride Month?
It is LGBTQ... Pride Month.
Plus Pride Week.
LGBTQ plus.
LGTBQ.
LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
LGTBQ. I'm gonna look at it.
LGBTQ.
BTQ.
You guys are making me feel a little dyslexic.
Just in case you guys forgot who I was and...
Does it say interim?
National Day of Mourning and Lament.
Yes.
Month or day? Day.
Day. Okay. All right. Good evening. We will call the meeting of the June first, 2020 Auburn City Council meeting to order. And would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. And Sean, will you please call roll? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Jay Raj?
Here.
Councilmember Malinga?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel? Councilmember Trout Manuel? You're still muted, Councilmember Trout Manuel. Be muted, please.
Here.
Thank you. All right, Sean, I believe we have some agenda modifications for this evening. Could you please share those with us?
Yes, Your Honor. Tonight, we are going to have a proclamation for LGBTQ plus Pride Week and National Day of Mourning and Lament, and Resolution 5524 and Resolution 5526 have all been added to the agenda.
Thank you. And council, I believe all of you have received those documents in advance. Excellent. All right, we have no public hearings tonight, and for audience participation, virtual participation is encouraged. The public is highly encouraged to attend the meeting virtually. If you're attending in person, that is not the case for this evening because the governor and the four corners of the state legislature have agreed to an extension of the virtual meetings and the OPMA changes. So participants can submit written comments via fax, mail, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 7:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be three hundred and fifty words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn, attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Fax to Sean Campbell, City Clerk, at 253-804-3116. Or email comments to scampbell@auburnwa.gov. And council, there was one public comment that was received prior to the 7:00 PM cutoff, and I believe you have all received a copy of that public comment. All right, we will move on. We have no correspondence this evening. Let's see, but I will move to proclamations. So we do have the two proclamations this evening that Sean mentioned. The first one is for National Day of Mourning and Lament. Whereas our nation has passed a grim point in our history. One hundred thousand Americans have died from COVID-19. And whereas the rapid spread of the virus, the scope of its impact, and its mitigation through social distancing, we have not been given the time or the space to mourn, lament, and remember those whose lives have been taken by the virus. And whereas it has been impossible to bury our dead as people have for thousands of years, communally and intimately with friends, family, and neighbors. And whereas as individual residents of our city and collectively as a nation, we need time to stop, reflect, pray, mourn, and honor the dead. And whereas to meet this need, religious communities across faiths are acting in unity, gathering together safely to mourn, memorialize, and remember the lives of those we have lost, both in our diverse faith traditions and in our public squares, and to pray for the healing of our nation. And whereas mayors are joining with faith leaders in their cities and across the nation through the United States Conference of Mayors to declare June 1, 2020 as National Day of Mourning and Lament, and to pause, reflect, pray, mourn, and honor all those we have lost, and looking forward to focus on repairing the injustices the pandemic has so painfully revealed. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim June 1, 2020 as National Day of Mourning and Lament in the City of Auburn, and urge faith and community leaders and all of our residents to join us to the extent possible to pause, reflect, pray, mourn, and honor all those we have lost, and to comfort all those that they have left behind, dated this first day of June 2020. And also today, council, we have the LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And I will tell you that we proudly, for the first time, raised the pride flag at City Hall. We did so today. There was a video that was done, and it will be available in the very near future. Whereas the City of Auburn is a welcoming community and recognizes the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall Riots, which is commemorating its 51st anniversary and is generally recognized as a catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer LGBTQ plus movement. And whereas Washington State has led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members. Whereas in 2008, the City of Auburn passed Resolution Number 4345 that joined Auburn with the National League of Cities Partnership for Working Toward Inclusive Communities, a program affirming that Auburn is committed to inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community, and that local elected officials can and should lead the way forward in making inclusiveness a priority in their cities. And whereas the City of Auburn in 2008 also began offering domestic partner benefits to its employees and further affirming that all employees, regardless of sexual orientation, will be treated equally in the eyes of their employer. And whereas in 2017, the City of Auburn added Resolution Number 5284 that reaffirms its commitment to making inclusiveness and diversity fundamental aspects of our community and affirming the value of all Auburn residents. And whereas we honor the history of the fight for equality, and we celebrate and take pride in our commitment to being a community that is safe and welcoming, where all people can feel safe and live without fear and prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, religion, gender identity, or sexual orientation. And now therefore, I Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim June 2020 as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the City of Auburn, and urge all citizens to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and to actively promote the principles of equality, constitutional, and civil rights of all people, dated this first day of June 2020. Many of the comments in this last proclamation are so relative in the world that we are living in right now in this crisis. All right, Sean, if you can please move forward. I believe we are, let's see, we are on Council Ad hoc Committee Reports. Council Ad hoc Committee Chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the City Council if any. Currently, we have Finance Ad hoc, and the committee chair is Councilmember Baggett. Do you have a report, Councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Committee has reviewed approximately thirty-nine pages of claims vouchers and wire transfers for a total of $1.5 million dated June 1, 2020. Also reviewed payroll vouchers for a total of $2.5 million for the period May 13 through May 26, 2020. The committee recommends approval of the payroll and claims vouchers.
Thank you, Councilmember Baggett. All right. First thing on the agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered by the City Council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey has raised his hand. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, and I believe Councilmember Baggett would like to second.
I second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's Consent Agenda consists of the minutes of the May 11, 2020 study session, the minutes of the May 18, 2020 City Council meeting, claims vouchers and payroll vouchers as described and presented by Councilmember Baggett, and the suspension of the Council Rules of Procedure once again in accordance with the virtual and telephone participation of council meetings as we continue the governor's directive, and we are amending now through July 31, 2020. And then lastly, setting a date for the public hearing for the Transportation Improvement Program, 2021 to 2026.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Council, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have no unfinished business this evening. We will move on to ordinances, Number 6761, an ordinance relating to flood hazard areas and amending Chapter 15.68 of the Auburn City Code. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I would move adoption of Ordinance Number 6761.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is related to flood hazard areas and amends Chapter 15.68 of the Auburn City Code. The proposed ordinance was reviewed by the council at our May 26 study session. The purpose is to protect human life and property from the dangers of flooding, protect infrastructure, identify flood zones, and educate those that have property in flood zones. Passage of this ordinance will also qualify the city, its residents, and businesses for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ordinance Number 6761, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5516, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept federal grants to be administered through the Washington State Department of Transportation. Councilmember Jay Raj?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution 6761.
Resolution 5516?
5516.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Sterns?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Raj?
Resolution Number 5516 authorizes the mayor to accept federal grants to be administered to the Washington State Department of Transportation. The city applied for and was awarded following federal grants, $673,540 to finance, design, and environmental permitting and construction phases of the Third Street Southwest Bridge Deck Preservation Project. There is no local funding to match requirement, and $647,850 to finance and design environmental permitting and construction phases of Midfield Bridge Deck Preservation Project. There is no local funding to match requirement.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 5516, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5518, a resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with King County Metro and Pierce Transit for Transit Route 497. Councilmember Malinga?
Your Honor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 5516.
5518.
I'm sorry, 5518, sorry.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I would second that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga?
Yes. This Resolution 5518 authorizes an interlocal agreement between King County Metro and Pierce Transit for Transit Route 497. The King County Metro had a funding mechanism for this service which was canceled, and therefore, a new funding mechanism was put in place. The original transit service agreement expired September of 2020 and is replaced by this new Transit Service Financial Partnership Agreement. I ask for this to be adopted.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, council, I will ask that when you vote, if you please unmute yourself so that your voice can be recorded. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5518, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5520, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Auburn and the Auburn School District relating to Project CP1902, pedestrian safety sidewalks, and ADA improvements. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move Resolution 5520.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 5520 is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement between the City of Auburn and the Auburn School District relating to pedestrian safety sidewalk ADA improvement.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 5520, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5523, a resolution adopting the substantial amendment to the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan to incorporate CDBG-CV funds. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 5523. This was brought forward to the City Council...
Oh, Councilmember Trout Manuel, let me get a second before you explain the...
I apologize.
That's all right, thank you.
I'm trying to get ahead of myself.
That's all right, it's a good one to be in front of. Councilmember Malinga?
I second this, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Okay, as I was saying, this was brought forward to the City Council while under various orders from the Governor of the State of Washington because it pertains to COVID-19, and the city responds at first. On March 27, 2020, the United States Congress passed a COVID- COVID Virus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, also known as the CARE Act. This bill allocated $5 billion in supplemental community development block grants known as CDBG funding for grants to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-CDBG COVID. On May 11, 2020, the city steps to submit an overview of these funds that the federal planning requirements propose use and a timeline. A little background, each year, our city executes the specific actions to implement the objectives and strategies of a five-year consolidating plan, which are overlaid in an annual action plan. As a brief, off of the CARE Act, President Trump, on March 27, Congress cated additional $371,805 in CDBG funding to our City of Auburn to prevent or prepare for and respond to the COVID virus. These funds called CDBG-CD are administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and are required to be incorporated into the CDBG planning document. Due to the timing of the 2020, it's very important to amend the 2019 Annual Action Plan to incorporate the CDBG-CD funds of $371,805 to help our community needs. I move to adopt Resolution Number 5523.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution 5523, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, did you have a question? Okay.
No, I didn't. Just trying to find the mute button.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5524, a resolution granting administrative authority to the mayor to develop and implement strategies designed to ameliorate the adverse impacts of COVID-19 faced by residential tenants and residential property owners and managers. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Resolution Number 5524 grants administrative...
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
...authority to the...
Councilmember Trout Manuel, can you make the motion first, please?
Oh my God, I'm messing up. I make a motion to adopt 5524.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, for the second?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Okay, Mayor, here, I'll try again. Resolution Number 5524 grants administrative authority to the mayor to develop and implement strategies designed to ameliorate the adverse impact of COVID-19 faced by residents, tenants, and resident property owners and manager first. On March 18, 2020, and then on April 16, 2020, Governor Inslee issued Proclamation 20-19 and 20-19.1 respectfully prohibiting landlords, property owners, and property management from evicting, displacing, or otherwise removing tenants from residential property or take steps towards the same unless renewed by the governor. These proclamations expire on June 4, 2020. Resolution 5524 provides the mayor with authority to proceed with administration measures to mitigate and potentially impact of residential evictions during a period of time that will either see prolonged, continued economic and health impacts, or what it's like to be a prolonged period of economic recovery. I move to adopt Resolution 5524.
Thank you, councilmember. All right. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of Resolution 5524, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolution Number 5526, a resolution ratifying and confirming Emergency Proclamation 2020-06 and the Civil Order imposing curfews and extending the term of the curfew order. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution 5526.
Thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Brown?
I second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. Since the tragic occurrences have resulted in the death of George Floyd, we've seen a number of protests across the nation. The peaceful protests have been marred by unfortunately those who have perpetrated violence and destruction of property and communities. Auburn is not immune to this, and we have experienced this last evening in our own community, resulting in the mayor to issue an emergency proclamation imposing curfews under the Statuary Emergency Authority. Now, Backus issued such proclamation and curfew order pursuant to City Code. This needs to be considered by the City Council for confirmation and ratification or amendment. This is especially the case where curfew is beyond the initial forty-eight hour period that is warranted. This resolution approved by City Council would ratify the mayor's proclamation and curfew order as amended to afford law enforcement tools necessary to keep Auburn safe in case law enforcement sees their witnesses or has information related to protests that want to turn violent.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, council? Councilmember Sterns, are you raising your hand? I believe you're muted. There we go.
Yeah, I thought I hit the raise your hand button. Thank you, Your Honor. I generally am a little bit concerned about curfews, and I do hope that, my wish is that things are tailored necessarily as narrow as possible. But I just have three quick questions about the curfew. One is, are people, just to clarify for the public...
Councilmember Sterns, can you speak up a little bit? It's very difficult to hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. Are people allowed, I have three questions. The first is, are people allowed to go to and from war? allowed to go to and from work? The second is, can people go outside to walk their dog? And the third is, the curfew proclamation allow the police or other law enforcement to issue warnings first?
So, Councilmember Sterns, the, uh, the curfew does exempt those going to and from work or at work. Uh, there, the curfew is in place from 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM, so there should be few reasons that people are out at those hours, and it would be at the discretion of police as to whether they can issue a warning or a citation. This is simply a tool for our police officers to have available to them should it be necessary. They are not going to be going out trying to find that individual walking their dog in the middle of the night and arrest them or provide them with a citation. That is not what this is in place for.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I suspected as much. I just wanted clarification. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution, oh, Councilmember Brown, did you have a question? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number 5526, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Passes. All right. We have come to the end of the business portion of the meeting. We will now move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations, and we will begin with Deputy Mayor Decorsi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, over the, since our last council meeting, I've attended a number of virtual meetings. Uh, one I'll highlight very quickly. Uh, I attended the Sound Transit Elected Officials Information Session where Sound Transit briefed a number of us on the current situation related to Sound Transit activities and projects. Uh, Sound Transit did receive $166 million from the CARES Act, however, Sound Transit also experienced an 80% to 90% ridership drop across the board. Uh, revenues have dropped as well naturally, and, uh, out of all the funding, only 16% of Sound Transit projects are federally funded. So, Sound Transit is currently going through a process of looking at strategies and identifying over the next 25 years for a 25-year plan with current and potential economic situations in mind of what can happen, how it can happen, when it can happen, and if it can happen. Uh, Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a comment related to our current situation with the passing of, of George Floyd.
Yes.
We have all experienced a situation across our country, and it's not only tragic, it's horrific. We had a 47-year-old American who died at the hands of a police officer who chose to place a knee on the neck of this individual while this individual was pleading and telling everyone that he could not breathe. This 47-year-old man called out to his mother. Seeing this individual laid prone on the ground in handcuffs with a knee on his neck, unable to move, unable to have anything else happen except just laying there, resulted in his passing. Not only has the people who knew George Floyd, nobody around, none of us knew who George Floyd was. We didn't know this man, but his friends, his family, his coworkers, others who came in contact with, knew of this individual, knew of this man. Now, the whole world knows where George Floyd is, and we've seen protests across the globe that have resulted in those taking a stance against what happened by the actions of one individual and others who watched it happen. There's no place for this in our society. We all bleed the same color. Somebody's looking at the skin color of somebody else and has a problem with that person because of skin color. Shame on those who are doing that. We've seen the tragic results in our own communities of those who have chose not to honor this man, but those who have chose to cause chaos, havoc, and destruction. They don't care about George Floyd. All they care about is looting and wreaking havoc in our communities, again, which we saw last evening in our community of Auburn. Saying sorry doesn't change things. It's time to recognize that no matter the color of the skin, we are all Americans, and we all need to be treated that way without hesitation, and everybody should be treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I have a couple of reports. Uh, one is on May the 28th, Thursday of last week, we, uh, and the Senior Citizens Center, we delivered about 330, I believe it is, 330 residents with meals to last them about a week, and I think we're going to do it next Thursday as well. After that, the funding runs out, um, but I want to thank all the volunteers and the directors who put this thing together, um, and the senior citizens at Reserve, the SHAG, and Hillside Gardens are very, very appreciative of what we are doing. They come out of the door and they say thank you, God bless you, and, uh, it makes my heart full when I hear these people are very appreciative of what we as citizens are doing, uh, for our citizens. The next, uh, I would like to talk a little bit about, uh, Mr. George Floyd, and the reason I, I am talking about him today is I had a conversation with a friend of mine, and, uh, she said this thing is not just because of Mr. Floyd, but because of the history of violence against African-Americans in the name of the law. African-Americans, American fathers and mothers fear for their children every day when they go out to the playground, school, and work, and they wonder if they would even come, if they would ever come home. This fear is not unfounded, as it has happened over the years to too many African-Americans for having the wrong skin color and being at the wrong place at the wrong time. This should not be happening in our country. We are all one people, Americans with the right to life, liberty, and justice. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't have a formal report, but I do want to make a statement about the topics of the day. I want folks to know that we on this council support the rights of American citizens to be out in the streets demanding, uh, change, institutional change, and support your right to exercise the freedom of speech. Uh, I do look forward to a time in this country when people will be more concerned about an outrage by the loss of life due to the scourge of racism as we are about the loss of property. And while it isn't, it's wrong for people to, to engage in violence during protests, it is wrong for people to be killed because they're black or any other, uh, that racist reason. So, um, my heart mourns for America. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Troutman.
Yes, um, I had several, uh, committee meetings that I attended, and it's sadly to say that it all has to do with our system. Uh, on May 12, met with our domestic talent, King County Prosecutor Attorney, and, um, the Coalition for Ending Gender Bias. And, um, I just have to say that our prosecutor attorneys have their hands full with, um, all this stuff that's been going on since the COVID has happened. Uh, the YMCAs have made up some really nice flyers that they're trying to distribute on survivors first, and that's got to do with the women. Um, so, because the numbers of cases have gone up so high just due to the women being, or men being with the perpetrator, even with children. So, that was, uh, a meeting that I really didn't enjoy being in. Also, the next meeting was my Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, uh, hearing from the King County Juvenile, uh, legal system. They shared some statistics and some data on criminal justice and, uh, also the regional approach to gun violence. Also, they have shared some statistics on that, and I'll be giving it into my report. But I also would like to talk about Mr. George Floyd, um, because we also met with the Milo Group, um, it's the multicultural elective legislative, uh, uh, elective officials that have been formed here in the region. And to hear some of those women, and especially one of our council members from Fedway, speak, and she got very emotional about how she fears every night ever since that young man who got shot in Georgia, because her two young, her two sons, they're avid joggers, and she says she fears every time they go out running and just waits until they come into the door. Also, we have been hearing a lot of comments from the, one of the seniors that goes to our coffee meeting. They call her, um, well, anyways, she, she has shared also, she's a woman of color, and she has shared a lot about every time her sons are driving around or, uh, walking around here in Auburn, she fears for their life as well. And I'm always telling her, we have some very good police officers in our, in our city, uh, but it only takes, it only takes one bad apple to put everybody under the same umbrella. And, uh, I just would like all of us to really follow that letter that we have, uh, formed because we do support, uh, equity. We do support, uh, everyone, well, from this city. I, I do feel that with bringing race equity into our city and to our, into our, uh, work and everything, it's going to help out because I have, I see us going backwards instead of going forward, and it's really sad to see that because we're a good, good country. And I, I don't understand why there's, there's not enough people, um, loving and respecting each other. So, I look forward to working with each and every one of you to make our city a better and stronger place to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, without going into a lot of detail regarding the George Floyd situation, uh, I just echo all of the council members' comments and agree wholeheartedly. Again, we, we really do not have any place in our, in our society for this kind of violence and racism, and I think that we really need to focus on the issues and not dance around them. Uh, we also do not need to have, uh, our government officials speak, uh, in a, in a fashion that would create chaos and additional, uh, emotions and, uh, emotions overspilling just because of rhetoric. And I think that, uh, we as, as elected officials and those that run our cities, our staff and everything, we really need to take a second look at all of the things that we're doing. We need racial equity in our, in our cities, uh, in our towns, and our, all of our communities, and I think it's time that, that we really wake up and, and, uh, take notice of this. Uh, getting back on to, uh, reports here, I believe that, uh, we had a special meeting yesterday of the Tacoma-Pierce County Board of Health, and as most of you know, the counties within, uh, the state are vying for different phases, uh, of opening their cities to, uh, uh, try to get their, uh, their safe start, if you will, uh, in motion. Uh, Pierce County is the, is, was preparing their, uh, application to go forward, and basically, they were completely ready to go, and Dr. Anthony Chen, uh, yesterday, who was the Director of Health for the Tacoma-Pierce County area, uh, basically prepared and presented the documents and all of their qualifications. They were a little shy on a couple of issues that were requirements, uh, but they felt they were close enough to go forward. Uh, basically, the, the, the process involves, uh, preparing the application, submitting it to the Pierce County Council, and, uh, this is the same routine for King County and all the other counties involved. Uh, and then once the council, if it approves the, uh, application, that moves to the, uh, County Executive to put it forward to the Secretary of Health for the state, and that will, uh, be the, uh, process in which they will review the, uh, application and determine whether they can go forward either in a full or a partial phase. Uh, shortly after the Board of Health approved the application as presented, uh, we received new information from the Secretary, uh, of Health for the state, adding two additional metrics, uh, to the equation and the process. Uh, Pierce County is diligently trying to prepare responses to that, uh, and basically what that is, it result, or it would involve, I'm sorry, um, a, uh, daily contact of those people that are in isolation or in quarantine with an 80% of each, uh, target. So, uh, we're hoping to use the state, uh, what they call the PREP program, which is a data file that allows contact electronically or telephonically with the, uh, people that are in those two situations. And through that use of that data file and that capability, they hope to be able to respond to the, uh, State Secretary of, of Health. So, this is the same process, again, as I mentioned, that King County is going to have to go through, and we're vying right now for, uh, an application that's to be prepared, uh, with hopefully some modification because of the size of our county or King County. So, uh, that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any reports, but I did want to make a statement. Um, I wanted to say I appreciate the comments of all my fellow council members tonight. Um, the things that are happening that we're seeing in the news are very troubling, uh, but I hope for peace, I hope for unity, and I hope for an end to racism. But I hope for peace, I hope for unity, and I hope for an end to racism. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good? Okay. So first, I just wanted to report, I had a chance last week to attend a special committee meeting of the Auburn Arts Commission. And they voted on and reviewed a number of different sculptures for downtown Auburn and other sites around Auburn. And I just really want to commend the amazing work of the commission. They're fantastic. They know so much about art, way more than I could imagine I would ever be able to learn. And I'd also like to say that, wow, you know, the quality of the art, the sculptures that were submitted, it is just really, really impressive. So it was a fantastic meeting. I was really amazed by what's going to be downtown there. And also pleased to learn that the commission's also in the city as well, working with the Muckleshoot Tribe on a welcoming figure. Really important for our city to have. And then turning to the events, the recent events, I did have a chance this morning to go and meet with Lacy Katz, the Public Relations Director for the Outlook Collection, Dow, the Outlook Collection. And she really expressed how wonderful the job that Auburn Police did in securing the property. Last night, they were all able to follow what was going on through social media. And in fact, Auburn had already been deployed along with Kent and Ritten, Tuckamulla, Port, Seattle Sheriff. And I don't know, a lot of jurisdictions were involved already. So it was really good to see that. And I did have a chance to visit T-Mobile and Verizon, Coastal and Starbucks, and then also down with all the dams that they, that was inflicted on their property. So it was really good to see a lot of people down there actually helping out, cleaning up. But I did want to make a statement on George Floyd's death, which is that George Floyd did not need to die mercilessly at the hands of the Minneapolis Police. Like so many of you, I'm filled with outrage and pain that, for his death, as well as the decades and centuries of injustice that's been in our nation's history. The heartbreak that I feel and that you feel is real and it hurts. And I stand with the community's demands for institutional change and support everyone's First Amendment right to march, rally, and exercise free speech. The message was what matters the most, and we should not forget it. As a community and as a united people, we're fast when we offer compassion, hope, and healing. Now, that's what I believe in, that's what I stand for. And let's pray for the families who suffered, not just those of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery, John T. Williams. Let's pray for everyone. And let's help out the businesses that have suffered. Let's use our collective outrage for positive action and put our minds together. Let's change the system, but also change ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. So before I, well, I will say just a couple of things. And then council has a joint statement that they would like to make as well. Just wanted to run through a few of the things that have occurred in the last few days here in Auburn. Our police have responded as part of the CDU for this region to ensure the absence of violence and injury at the protests that have taken place throughout our region. And I want to thank them for their part in helping with the safety of all of those involved. They came back last night to work at the Outlook Collection. As you have heard, there was not a protest. There is a difference, a big difference between a protest and looting. And last night at the Outlook Collection, there was looting. And that was not done by anyone who truly had a message to share about the injustice and the inequities that occur and exist within our society. It was someone who was trying to rob that message. And we will not allow, we will not tolerate that type of activity in our city. We have word that there will be a peaceful protest beginning at City Hall tomorrow. We will be ready for that. I will be out front. I believe some of the council members will be out front as well, as will our police chief, Dan O'Neill. We anticipate this to be a protest that has no violence and that we will be in support of that protest. We will not, in our city, allow or accept any type of violence, any type of racism or inequalities that marginalize anyone within our city. We had with Chief O'Neill, with Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, and Councilmember Jay Raj today. We had a meeting with Pastor LaShand Lambert, who is at the Resurrection Church out of St. Matthews or San Mateo. It was a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, talking about how we bring this community together. How do we overcome years and years and years of systemic racism? And how do we have open, honest, transparent conversations? It begins with building relationships. It begins with building trust. Begins with breaking down the barriers and the perceptions on all sides of this issue. We must do better when we know better. And we will continue to have those conversations because the life of our city, the life of the people in this city, depend on that. You have my commitment, as well as that of our chief, to continue to work on the issues in our city. We are not perfect. I would never be here to tell you that we are. Are there injustices in our city? Yes, there are. Can we be better? Absolutely. And that is my commitment that you have from me today on record that we will and can do better in the city of Auburn. Now, our city council has a message that they would like to share. And I believe Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, you would like to begin. And council, if you would like to unmute all of you so that when it is your time to speak, it can be a continuous flow.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have not received anything that gives me my stopping point. So if you would kindly share my stopping point, I will proceed accordingly.
Okay. Councilmember, it was Senate 606, but you are through swift justice.
Thank you.
The first two sentences.
All right, very good. Thank you. George Floyd did not deserve to die at the hands of the Minneapolis Police. Those who are responsible for his death should be brought to swift justice.
It is when authority and power is used in an unjust matter that we must take a step back and oppose the injustice. This is a plea that we do not turn our back.
This is a moment that can define how we act moving forward. We understand your collective outrage and pain.
We stand with you and your demand for institutional change and support your right to exercise your First Amendment right of free speech.
We unequivocally support racial equity and social justice in our society and will work to preserve that ideal in our community and beyond.
We also stand behind the fact that the actions of one or even a few do not, cannot define an entire group of people. An overwhelming majority of the men and women in law enforcement in this country are good and just people, and proven each and every day.
Please let us remember them and allow them to be part of the answer. It is the only way forward for all of us.
Thank you, council, and let us all be part of the answer from this day and every day moving forward. We are adjourned.